All right, we're going to call this meeting to order of the Emeryville City School Committee. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Edkin.
Here.
School Board Member Affelt.
Here.
Councilmember Asher is excused, Councilmember Brinkman is excused, Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
School Board Member Simon.
Here.
School Board Member Kent. School Board Member Dice.
Here.
School Board Member Dwin.
Here.
Student Member Carr.
Here.
Student Member Seth.
Here.
All right. Do you have any public comment?
My name is Brian Donahue, I'm a parent here at Emery. I have my daughter goes to the, to Annie Yates Elementary School, so I'm invested in this school district. As everybody here knows, the former superintendent, Deborah Lindo, is no longer with us. And this board, the school board, has refused to tell us why she's no longer with us. Although she did tell the parents and that they did tell the parents and the citizens. You have to forgive me for a moment, I have a flu right now, I'm really sick.
Oh, man.
But here I am, anyway. Whoever speaks next shouldn't touch this. So, as we know, the school board did tell us, however, that they have full confidence in Ms. Lindo after they were made aware that the teachers, 93 percent of the teachers at Emery have no confidence in former superintendent Ms. Lindo. So, I see one, two, three school board members here, present here, that are responsible for that decision to write a resolution in support of Deborah Lindo. That would be, of course, Melody Dice, Josh Simon, and Miguel Dwin. Those three school board members had a hand in writing that resolution in support of the former superintendent, directly counter to 93 percent of the teachers. I thought that was a bridge too far, frankly. Apparently you guys thought it was perfectly fine. So you hired this woman, you vetted her, you stood by her when the teachers said they can't work with her, and now we know with the declaration that Ms. Lindo filed in Superior Court of Los Angeles County with, when a Silicon Valley billionaire tech guy is suing the Los Angeles School District to try to make it easier to fire school teachers, and to try to make it easier to, or try to make it to tie teacher pay to student test scores. We now know that Ms. Lindo, thank you for that reminder, we now know that Ms. Lindo filed a declaration in support of that. So, I have to take from the fact that you're not telling us why she's no longer here, that you have to support that. You, the school board members, support what Ms. Lindo stood for, and that is tie teacher pay to student test scores and bust the teachers' union. So barring any explanation from the school board that would serve to clarify that, we're going with that assumption that that's what you stand for, and I think you should hear tonight, tell us, give us more information. You should give us more information where Ms. Lindo is. You haven't told us, you just said she's gone. You supported her, where is she?
Mr. Donahue?
Okay, now I'll take my answers.
Okay.
I'll sit down and take my answers.
Okay.
Insofar that you can give them, I'll take my answers. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
You're not going to answer.
The answer is, the district is moving on, and we have a very good team that we're very proud of, and Ms. Lindo is no longer relevant to the conversation.
Your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
She's your candidate, she's your woman, she's your superintendent.
Is there any other public comment?
Okay, that gives me valuable information.
Move approval of the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Second. Any comment or amendment on the minutes?
Very well done.
Okay. The minutes are adopted by consent and acclamation. Staff, do we have any staff comments? Mr. Quinn, do you have any com- or updates?
I've met.
Oh, you need a mic. You need a mic.
Good evening, I've met most of you here, I don't know everyone, I hope to meet you as soon as possible, the students, and one of the council members I haven't met yet, Ms. West. But I'm very happy to be here. This is, a great love of mine is public education, and I was here in Emeryville several years ago as state administrator and later as trustee, and I have a great love for this district, and I'm so happy to be able to come back and be a part of the exciting times that the district is going through right now, and its partnership with the city. Very exciting days ahead, and I'm happy with the, and hopeful that with the knowledge I have, having worked in the district for so many years, that I'll be able to help you in this trans, very important transition, so, very pleased to be here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We're very pleased to have you, Mr. Quinn, and also John Sugiyama will be joining you and trading off with you as he becomes available later in the year to fulfill the interim superintendent role, and we're excited about that team as well. Did you have something to add?
I have a member comment when it's.
Okay, I think we're, any other staff comments?
Nothing.
Okay, member comments?
So, I've been on the school board now twelve and, a little over twelve years. My term was supposed to end in December, but we moved the goalpost. But the hardest thing that I've done in the twelve years that I've been on the school board is to have to let you know that the time for me to be on the school board is coming to an end, and the March 26th board meeting will be my last school board meeting. So I will be, after this meeting, entering my notice of resignation. I should say that although I will have to be leaving the board, I am not leaving the community entirely. I have a great love for this community, although my wife and I will be moving, we will, we still own property at Emery Village, and hopefully, as soon as our girls go off to college, we can fit into the house that we bought. So we're looking forward to living next to the Center for Community Life, and I'm looking forward to finding ways that I can help the district in any way possible, whether it's providing, I've offered to help with the Facilities Committee or other roles. So I stand ready to help where I can. I do have a new job which has made it rather difficult to put in the hours for school board, so all of this is combined to bring me to the point where I have to make this change. But it is truly, truly been a pleasure, not all the time, but many of the times, and truly a pleasure to work with the people in this room, and many of the people in the community who've really come together to figure out what can we do to support our kids. And it, I am so joyed with seeing the result, the kids who've graduated and the kids who've grown up in this district, and to see you're prospering, that it has been very satisfying. But as my wife keeps reminding me, I cannot continue to give what I don't have, and I've now come to the end of the amount of time that I can be a full-time school board member. So, I wanted to just make that, not to go on at too much length, but I needed to let you know, and let you know that I am committed to continue to be involved as a property owner who's going to live right next door to the Center for Community Life. Thank you.
I have another comment, John.
Okay.
My first comment is, it's a great loss, that we're losing Joshua, temporarily, I hope, and I hope he comes back when the kids go to college. But the other comment that I'd like to make is that this morning I was at a public safety meeting, and we were discussing design ways to limit the crime in the city of Emeryville, and I asked them specifically about the involvement of the PD in the ECCL project, because they're going to be the primary responders there after it's built, and they should be a part of the meetings that are taking place, and I wanted to bring that to the attention of both the school board members and the council members, that it's critical that we have a good cohesion here between the ECCL and the police department that's going to serve them. So I'm just making that comment, and I hope we follow through on that.
You may want to add the fire department as well.
Well, the fire department through George Warren is, you know, they have a standard role of going over plans and everything. The PD is a little different, but the PD is critical. So, Cindy, do you want to comment on that? Is that a doable thing to get them involved?
Yeah, I did tell, in talking to you, that they were involved in the very first safety meeting that we had. Jeannie was present, and one of the sergeants, I can't remember, but Dave could talk about.
Well, we'll contact them, we welcome their input.
Chief James.
Oh, yeah.
If you contact him. I think we'll be well-served down the line if we have them on board, not just at the last minute from a contract saying, giving their input, although he may be, may be a very good sidecrack. That's all I got.
Good suggestion, and we'll follow up on that.
Thank you. Have a comment.
Member Atkins.
Okay, so, for those of you who don't know, I represent the city of Emeryville on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and I wanted to inform this body and the school community that the Measure B, which is the one cent sales tax measure to support transportation in the county, is going to be back on the ballot, hopefully with a successful outcome in November, and particularly germane to school communities, 48 percent of the entire expenditure plan is going to go for different kinds of public transportation, bus, and senior and youth transit. So built into the expenditure plan is a student youth transit pass program, and I remember at least at one point hearing about students who came to Emery Secondary on the 72 from as far away as Richmond. So, I don't know whether that's still the case, but we're way past the days of yellow school buses to take students to and from school, and people are relying on AC Transit. So, I wanted to let the school community in particular know to start talking it up.
So, Member Atkins, would these passes be free to the students, or cost, a reduced cost, discount cost?
It's a discount.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it's free.
Okay. No, because there have been some.
It might be, I have to check.
No, no, I mean, some programs, they do offer free passes to especially the McKinney-Vento students, but at the other end, they offer a discount.
I'll find out, I'll find out, Miguel, if it's going to be free or just reduce price.
Yeah, actually, for youth Clipper Card, it's already 50 percent, so I hope that it goes significantly beyond that.
Okay, good, good. Keep us informed.
Yeah, well, I'll be calling on the school community to.
That's fine.
Promote this.
All right, we can do it. Other member comment?
I do, I just want to acknowledge Josh's time with me, that I'm, I'm a little bit behind you in terms of number of years. I just remember I was 26, and I'm no longer that. So, I just remember that, and those days are gone, but just really want to appreciate and congratulate you on being able to go out at a good time for you and your family, and it's not something that, you know, some dramatic something has happened, but that you are, you know, continuing and growing in your healthy family. So I think it's really powerful that many of us are able to transition into and out of things at the, at the right moment, so I just wanted to, you know, applaud and appreciate you for that. And your stewardship has been, you know, has been limitless and absolutely.
Fabulous.
Fabulous, thank you, loss of word. That's perfect. But with that said, I did want to remind the Emeryville community that the school board is in fact undergoing superintendent search on our website, and I had to look it up, that's why I was here. What is it? emeryusd.k12.ca.us is where you'll be able to, if you're interested, complete a survey that our, our search firm, Ray &amp; Associates, is conducting. There'll be a number of open forums next week, February 11, 12, and 13, there are a series of events where specific groups and also a public forum, I believe, is on the 11, here in the Ralph Hawley School Site. So please, if you will, go to that website and be mindful that we do have this window to, again, work very closely with the community to identify the best leader for our district. So just wanted to throw that reminder out there as well. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that, and I will just add a brief comment in appreciation of Mr. Simon and his service on the school board, and only to say, this is not the time or the forum to recognize your contributions to the district. We will certainly do that at the appropriate time, but we do appreciate it, and we'll be sorry to lose you.
John?
Yes, Member West.
I just want to chime in also and appreciate Joshua Simon for all of his years of dedication, and also for personal support and conversations and all explanations and collaboration around important decisions that affect our community. And I would just like to ask also, not trying to be crude, but I would like to know what the school board's plan is in terms of an appointment or other way of replacing who is irreplaceable here.
Right, I knew that, I forgot that part. So, I do know, we've done this before, and actually I came on board as an appointment during that process, there's a 60-day period in which we'd have to identify through an appointment process, an application process that would be open. So as soon as we are officially on tap, and I have the letter today, so, we'll be able to move forward and go through the process, but it's typically an application process, and has been in the past, and so members of the community and of course residents have that opportunity to put their name in the ring, if you will, and complete that form, which will likely be on our website, or be available probably from Lisa Tamarie, Assistant to John Quinn, and from that point, we'll have basically 60 days from his last day to appoint someone. And because we're going through the process of superintendent interviews and selection, we're definitely working to, you know, have an accelerated type of timeline, but that's the plan.
So you're saying a maximum of 60 days?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joshua, for your service.
It's been a pleasure to serve with you.
Any other member comments?
I have just got a question for Melody, and that appointment will be until November 14?
Correct, correct. It will finish out his term, which would be.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm going to move on to student member update.
So we have quite a few announcements to make today. And our first announcement begins with the ESS Annual Crab Feed, which will be held on February 15th at the Emeryville Senior Center from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Tickets are on sale now, and all proceeds benefit ESS students. You can purchase the tickets for the price of $50 from a DTNI, who will be selling the tickets after the meeting, and the flyers have been placed in front of you for more information. And also, in Ms. Stillman's Advanced Art Classes at ESS, we have begun work on a project in which students explore the history and development of Emeryville. Today Maurice Kaufman, the Emeryville City Engineer, visited our classes and gave a presentation on the development of Emeryville. Students explored various aspects from the Santa Fe Railroad that ran through the streets of Emeryville, to the process of creating the landfill that is the Emeryville Marina today. And throughout the semester, students will continue exploring Emeryville, and we will continue to give you updates on the various findings that we find. The annual senior ski trip will be taking place during the President's Week Vacation, and the trip will be three days long. Our seniors and chaperones are looking forward to having a great time at Lake Tahoe. And the last announcement is, the basketball season is coming to an end, and the boys' basketball team is doing very well, and the girls are tied for first place in their league, and they only had one loss. And ESS is also looking forward to beginning its girls' soccer and softball seasons in the upcoming week. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Our next item is the Emeryville Ed Fund. Mr. Powell.
I have to fundraise, okay. Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. I would like to highlight Emeryville resident Dr. Marcin Craftcheck, who has donated to the Emery Ed Fund $1,000 for teacher mini-grants, and $1,500 to our scholarship program. Thank you very much to Dr. Craftcheck. If you're watching on YouTube or via television and would like to support our teacher mini-grants program, which allows for teachers to apply for up to $200 to offset the cost of supplies or field trips, et cetera, or if you like to support our scholarship program, $500 sends one student to a city college, and $1,500 supports a four-year university student to pay for books and supplies. Please consider mailing a donation of any amount to the Emery Ed Fund at 1275 61st Street in Emeryville, or simply log on to our secure site at emeryed.org/donate. The Emery Ed Fund Scholarship Application Period is now open for Emery Secondary School seniors and graduates. The deadline is April 18th. You can contact our office at 510-601-4997 for a copy of the application, or visit emeryed.org/programs for more information on our scholarship program and process. The Ed Fund will host a scholarship workshop for Emery Secondary seniors at ESS on February the 12th to walk students through the application process. Ed Fund scholarships are for students that have a cumulative GPA of 2.5 or higher and attend an accredited two- or four-year university or college. The Ed Fund scholarships range between $500 and $5,000 per student. You can spread the word and encourage students to apply. We are appealing to the alumni of Emery High that might be out there and would like to sponsor a student and help them get to college. Soon alumni will be receiving an appeal postcard from Glenn Foster, interim president of the Emery Alumni Association, and Melody Dice, school board president, who's graciously asking you to please consider sending a donation of any amount to support Emeryville students. Please make sure your checks are payable to the Emery Ed Fund, and you can mail them to our office, and you can write in the memo line, scholarship program. The funds will be restricted for the intended purpose, or you can donate securely online at emeryed.org/donate. If you like more information, you can also call our office. Lastly, I would like to thank interim city manager of Albany, Patrick O'Keefe, who is also a board member of the Emery Ed Fund, for his recent donation of $1,000. Thank you, Pat. And I would like to also recognize all of the Emery Ed Fund board members, and perhaps those that are watching may not know who leads or directs the Emery Ed Fund and the affairs of the Ed Fund, and they include EUSD Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Anna Cretta Allen, Councilmember Kurt Brinkman, Gary Caffey, the Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T, Shyama Clooney, Councilmember Nora Davis, School Board President, Melody Dice, Retired Emeryville City Manager, John Flores, EEF President, John Gooding, Emeryville City Manager, Sabrina Landrith, Interim Superintendent, John Quinn, Interim City Manager, Patrick O'Keefe, City Manager of Albany, Patrick O'Keefe, EEF Board Secretary, Steve Rasmussen, and Emery Secondary School Alumni, William Releford of the Class of 2003, and I wanted to thank all of our board members publicly for all the hard work they do. Are there any questions?
Thanks, folks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Safe Route to Schools program, so if you could introduce yourself and take it away.
I got my hands tied. Am I on? Check, check? Okay. Arun Gohell, Alameda County Transportation Commission, Safe Route to School Program Manager. See, now I can't even look at my cheat notes, we're going to add some comedy here.
Do you know if the bus passes are free or reduced in the expenditure plan? Do you know?
I don't have the exact definition of that at this point, because it's a program that is still being established, and the finites are obviously be fully defined as we start to move forward with the expenditure plan. But I'm pretty sure more information will come along those lines.
Okay. Sorry.
No problems. Matter of fact.
I don't mean to throw you a curveball.
My presentation's pretty much ad hoc, so it's not scripted. The idea is to be able to provide you guys some information about our program, and so what I'll do is I'll get started, and I'll try to make my way to the end of the presentation, and then entertain any questions that you may have. So the Safe Route to School program in Alameda County is one of the nation's largest Safe Route to School programs, and most comprehensive at that. We were recognized in August of 2013 for that, and so, what our program really focuses on is teaching kids how to get to school safely by walking, biking, carpooling, using the bus, and essentially using green transportation alternatives, reducing the carbon footprint. Some of the benefits are basically helping, provide for healthy kids, helping them thrive, and when they attend school, making them more alert. So essentially, the program's focused on what we call the five Es, education, encouragement, enforcement, engineering, and evaluation. And so in my presentation today, I'll touch upon some of those elements, and also be able to address some questions and concerns that you may have. A little highlight about the history of the program, in 2006, it was started with Caltrans funding the program in four schools. In 2007, Measure B saw this as an excellent opportunity to help kids get to and from school safely, and basically they're our future asset. So they put Measure B grant funds to work, and that was underneath, the old agency's name was Alameda County Transportation Improvement Authority, currently now called Alameda County Transportation Commission. Some of you may know it as the half a cent sales tax for transportation improvement, or Measure B. In 2011, the Safe Route to School program grew to 88 schools, and in 2013, we leveraged federal and state funds using the, with the use of local Measure B funds to get to over 100 schools. This is kind of a mapping of where we were in 2012, 13. Prior to that, we were primarily focused in the northern county, and then we started to move towards the southern and the eastern segments of the county. Emeryville now does have one school on board, and they joined us last year in 2013. So again, the program has two main components. One is a comprehensive program. It is a competitive application process, which provides a one-on-one site coordinator that works with the parent champions, the principals, the city, the school board, the parties that have vested interest. And we also provide free education encouragement programs and free safety incentives. That's the encouragement elements. A school that doesn't get on board, like the remainder of your schools in Emeryville that could not make the competitive application or did not apply, they, as any school can get this information online, using our information that we have, that provides the technical expertise and understanding, along with the curriculums that may be associated with that. Again, the county program expanded to over 102 schools last year. We do have a comprehensive report on that, so if you were interested in getting more information, it's nice and thick, and it goes into the individual schools. information, it's nice and thick and it goes into the individual schools. And again, Emeryville, Anna Yates Elementary, joined us in spring of 2013. We've delivered and organized over 400 events throughout the county and they focus on three big events. The International Walk and Roll to School, which happens in October, the Golden Sneaker, which happens in March, and Bike to School Day, which occurs in May. Throughout the year, we do offer assemblies to elementary schools, skills drills, bike education, walking school buses, themed walks, and bike mobile visits. Don't know how many of you guys know about the Bike Mobile? The Bike Mobile was started up two years ago with federal and state funds to offer free repairs to children and their parents of the schools. And essentially, what we do also is provide the education, the safety, and how to fix those bikes. We found a real segment in the community that basically could not afford, did not want to, or did not know how to, to go to a bike store to have a functional bike. And so, what we did learn was this Bike Mobile program was a highly successful program and is now a permanent component of our program. We're also in high schools. We do have six high schools. We started off with a pilot program two years ago and now we added two more. And we are planning to continue to expand our offerings at about a ratio of about 10% minimum per year. Little snapshot of the International Walk and Roll School Day that happened in October of 2013. We were in over 96 schools, so 96 schools did participate with over 21,000 students in Alameda County participating and enjoying the option of walking and rolling to school. The Golden Sneaker Contest that's coming up this coming March, March 13th through the 14th, so there's time to sign up. You don't have to be part of a program to be in, but Anna Yates definitely would be participating. Last year, 57 schools were in and we did have what's called a Platinum School Competition, so they were offered a Platinum sneaker that basically recognized them for their motivation, their environment, their students that wanted to participate inside of Alameda County. And at, the standard Golden Sneaker is every school receives a Golden Sneaker and they distribute it to their highest performing classroom. Bike to School Day, as you guys know, is in May. It's tagging along with Bike to Work Day or Bike to Work Month. And essentially, 65 schools participated in May. That was a 44% increase over the prior year. 2,300 students did participate on that event. The Bike Mobile, this is that snapshot, that's what our Bike Mobile looks like. Through the success of that program, the region, MTC, did start a program offering it throughout the Bay Area. And the notable piece here is every time we visit a school, we see over 115% increase of bikes on the bike racks. Time and time again, we've been servicing over 3,300 bikes since the conception. Anna Yates, like I said, did participate in the International Walk and Roll. They did do their student tallies and I'll show you some of that information. The Golden Sneaker Contest, we're hoping to see them participate actively on that along with the Bike to School Day. The key piece here is Safe Routes to School, the program for the county is not a standalone product. It does focus on working with the school districts and the city to leverage local tax dollars and procure federal and state funding. So, for instance, and I'm going to get into that a little bit about future funding and what we can do for that. A little bit about the trends. Again, everything was moving up. We started offering more segments and really looking at what were the benefits to children in today's society. And this graph right here really shows that the participation levels are going up year by year. As we would want to see, active modes are moving up, shared modes are moving up, and the individual drive alone, you know, single occupant with a family vehicle is moving down. Those are all positive directions for those mode splits. In addition, as many of us would be able to conclude but statistically never had the information before, we noticed that for a quarter-mile distance, you had more likeliness to walk and it continues to go down as you move further away. This is based on actual student surveys at the individual schools throughout the county of Alameda. Mode splits, in this case, Emeryville is not on the chart. Like I said, they started with us back in April of 2013, so we will be getting some information from them and I'll show you what Anna Yates is performing at. The key portion to look at really is the baseline for the county, which was set at 29% that walk. At Anna Yates, 25.5% walk, and this is confirmed by the hand tallies that we took, 60.5% use a family vehicle. We're going to work on bringing that number down. Obviously, geographic distribution and distance has a really key element there, but what we do need to do is maybe focus on the other green elements like biking and using transit. What can we do? Safe Routes to School program complements, we do a walk audit. What I did over here is I put up a sample of what a walk audit would look like. The things that we focus on essentially would be like the parking lots, the pedestrian crosswalks, the school drop-off points, bike racks on the facility, connectivity to trails. The key element behind here is this is not happening in a vacuum. It's working with the parents, working with the children, working with the principal, the school district, and the city to come up with a comprehensive improvement concept plan. And I want to stress the word "concept." These concepts can then be turned into abilities to focus on for leveraging applications for funding opportunities that may be coming down. The active transportation program, going through the CTC right now, hoping to establish their guidelines in March of this year, will be having a call for projects in May. And there's an opportunity for that funding and it's in the magnitude of around $24 million per year and at the first call, they're going to compile three years. So, that's $72 million for competitive grants. Okay? And that's really critical. We want to focus on that opportunity and look at the perspective of how we can use the local Measure B dollars through the walk audits, through letters of support, through the support of a nationally recognized program to procure those funds. Further on, like I said before, Measure B, which is a funding component voted in 1986, again, reauthorized in 2000, will be coming back on 2014 to the Transportation Expenditure Plan. It focuses and guarantees funding for the Safe Routes to School program along with focusing on transit, making it affordable, and preventing or providing traffic relief, and improving quality of the air and creating jobs. With that, if there's any questions, I'm all yours.
Any questions?
Yes.
Thanks for the presentation and I'm glad Anna Yates got on board. As you're probably aware, at the commission discussion level, when this subject has come up, we've talked about other things like school crossing guards. And before the high school was demolished and when the Center for Community Life gets built, our K-12 school, we won campus, will be on a state highway. And so, do you know what kind of flexibility there is to add school crossing guards?
To this program or to this funding source?
Correct.
This funding source has a specific exclusion for the school crossing guards. And that's not something that we as an agency created. The element behind there, though, is there's other fund sources that are capable of being procured. The walk audit helps identify those opportunities and locations, which can be a tool to include into those grant applications.
Do you know if Anna Yates is utilizing walking school buses?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great.
I have a question. Number two. I'm wondering, would it be to our advantage for maybe Mr. Gallagher, for him to look at the design plans for ECCL and kind of reconcile that and compare it to the walk audit and see if we're, if we are in alignment via our design to the county's walk audit, therefore maybe in the future, when it's built, we could apply or be in line for some of those grants based on, you know, having everything consolidated or, you know, everything matching what the walk audit is all about.
So, let me provide some clarity. The walk audits are performed to schools that are currently participating in the Safe Routes to School program. The particular school that I believe you're identifying is not one that's in our Safe Routes to School program.
It's not built yet.
It does not necessarily exclude them. We would be able to entertain that request, but the essence of the background of the walk audit is taking input from the parents that participate at that, that champion that effort, hearing the feedback from the school district, hearing the feedback from the principal and the children. Okay? And also using any statistical information of incidents. And from that, our team has planners onboard that work to compile a comprehensive list. We work with the city, we work with the school board to identify and create that concept plan, which then can be used for pursuing grant opportunities. So, I did want to provide that clarity. Chances are, we have not done one to that location. Anna Yates, I don't believe we've done one yet. Can we do one in time if there was a need to pursue a grant? I just need to hear that request and I can work with my team for availability to make that happen.
Okay. Would that be something, staff, that would be feasible or worth doing?
Yes, and all of this is real timely because as part of the ECCL project, we have a traffic engineer from the firm of Piers, Farr and Piers, it's the same traffic consultant that the city uses. And they're doing a detailed traffic management plan that deals with car traffic, promotes pedestrian and biking to schools. So, we can roll this in. They'll be preparing this plan over the next month. And as part of their work, we spent about an hour at dismissal time in Anna Yates with the, this traffic engineer from Farr and Piers. We're going to do the same thing at Santa Fe High School. We're going to do it at least a couple times and get the kind of information that he's talking about and get that rolled into this traffic management plan because it affects how we do the striping, it affects how we do the signalization of the traffic signals there on San Pablo. And so, it fits nicely with this data. And I'll get your card and make sure that we marry those two processes up.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Sean, I have a question.
Yes.
We presently have a capital improvement project on safe routes to school on San Pablo Avenue, and I would assume that you are working closely with our city engineer and that you're aware that those plans are pretty far down the road. So, before they get locked in or painted on, I hope every entity is talking to each other.
So, my understanding, actually, I was provided that update. This is the Bulbout Project. I believe they did make a presentation to the city and school committee twice and I believe they're trying to, they have to have this constructed by the end of this year.
Exactly.
Now, they are anticipating to start south of Anna Yates and it's gone before Caltrans and there is a requirement as far as the timing of those funds. Now, having said that, I received my update today, but my team is working actively with that group. Okay? And that's important to understand that, and I believe that is the Farr and Piers team because I did see...
We want everybody talking to each other.
They are. They are talking. They're fully engaged. And matter of fact, my team's onboard with all of those presentations. The team is led with Alta Planning and Associates, who's our prime contractor who delivers the Safe Routes to School program.
Thank you.
And the city engineer is part of our weekly ECCL project team meeting.
Good.
Member West.
Yeah, I just want to respond to some of those comments as well. When you're talking about the traffic impact analysis with Farr and Piers, just because it's something I see more often than the pickup time, I hope that the drop-off time is also analyzed because I think that's pretty key and different, but similar to pickup at Anna Yates. That's where I tend to be at 8:30 in the morning. And then my second point is one that's come before us several times at the council, which is the Bike Ped Path, which is built into the design of Phase Two of this project but not Phase One. And I am a very strong proponent. I think that a Bike Ped Path could only improve safe routes to school, people being able to feel comfortable. As it was mentioned, San Pablo is a state highway. It's not the most ideal way for people to get around and there is no other way between Hollis and San Pablo to get through that super block. So, I'm just going to put my little pitch in here and I hope Farr and Piers is also looking at what the project would be like with or without that Bike Ped Path so that that is articulated and comes to the decision-makers with full information as well.
So, one thing that Alameda County Transportation Program or Alameda County Transportation does focus on is that Bike Ped Path for the county. So, we do have a countywide comprehensive plan and we did work with the local jurisdictions to itemize and identify those. So, essentially, Safe Routes to School always turns back to that, identifies with that, and works on the connectivities that complement it. And that's, I think, the critical portion there. It's not happening in a vacuum.
And can I mention one other thing, which is that everyone seems in favor of the Bike Ped Path at this point except the safety issues that have been raised, but the final hurdle, it seems, is funding, that there's simply not enough money in the budget to pay for that path. And so, I want to appeal again to ACTC as a comprehensive support for this countywide plan, a comprehensive plan you mentioned, and what other funding sources could potentially pay for that. I think it was $575,000 price tag that was mentioned. If we can find money in this budget, we'll put it in, is what I was told, but right now there isn't.
So, the key piece there is one fund source that I did identify. The actual mechanism of how that's going to be coming together through the CTC, not us, California Transportation Commission, and the MTC for the call for projects. Nice thing about the ATP funding, and if it does go forward the way it's anticipated, is the local jurisdictions, which is the city, the schools, and can pursue this kind of funding. Okay? So, essentially, you as a city receive pass-through funds from local Measure B. That can be used as your matching fund to pursue these other opportunities. We're really focused on leveraging the local tax dollars to bring in. And one thing I failed to address and identify was in the past three years, we used, I think, like $200,000, $300,000 to procure over $2.2 million in capital infrastructure. And this current program that we are doing, this three, for the next three years, uses $800,000 of local Measure B to procure over $10 million of investments into Alameda County. That's the leveraging that we're talking about and we want to see that continue to grow. We want to work with the local jurisdictions and the schools.
Thank you.
I just kind of wanted to kind of piggyback on what Member West said regarding the bike path. I do think a feasibility study, I can support that and I think, you know, that's good, but I do want to make the comment that, you know, everyone is not in support of having a bike path because of some safety and secure problems back there, but I do think it's worth looking into and then bringing that back to the full body and letting us discuss some of the safety issues that the school board has regarding having a path back in that area.
So, just for clarity, our agency would not be the one that would champion that product.
I understand.
We would be in support of something like that and if necessary to participate in some of the elements, we could be active players.
And I just want to remind that it isn't our general planned, plan to have that path in place.
In terms of the, what did you call it, the walking audit around the school site? What I garnered from your comments was that you would only do that at a school where there's actual population yet. Our ECCL school, K-12, is still being built, projected for fall of 2015. So, how long after, you know, say we open in fall of 2015, how long after that do we need to see the patterns established for you to carry out such an audit?
So, this is where another background of mine would come into play. With the agency, we talk about traffic normalization. Generally, after a school opens, you're going to have a pattern that basically needs to normalize. People need to figure out their best way, their best approach, create those identifiable points of ingress egress. And from there, you... And from there, you also have the external component, which is, how is enforcement working? Enforcement doesn't always have to be enforcement on the pedestrian or the cyclist, but enforcement in conjunction with, uh, the, the commuters, the drivers. They need to understand that concept. So we do offer bike safety education courses to work as an educational component that piggybacks on that process. Um, so I would say essentially, when you were to open up a new facility, you'd wanna wait six months, maybe a year, before you do that. But there are planning tools that can come into play, um, and certainly, I can have the team look at it as far as making sure we're not making the fundamental, um, pitfalls from what we can identify at this time. Um, again, the input of the parents, the input of the children, seeing the traffic analysis, looking at the incidents that occur, that all feeds into the entirety of that program.
So there's conversations you could be having now, just based on design and data that we have at this point, it sounds like?
I will have to look at our resourcing based on that and what your guys' timing frame is, uh, who's at the key players. Like I said, uh, the, the prime consultant of our program is fully aware and engaged with the Farr and Pierce Program. So chances are, there are elements already being included and addressed.
And you can, you can make sure that happens.
I'm gonna verify that.
Great. All right. Any other comments or questions? Our student members have any thoughts on Safe Routes to School programs? Not at this time, okay? Uh, any public comment? Rodney, please come on up.
I can either go on after being thrown in the microphone.
You're our man.
Yeah, that one's clean.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, honored council and board members and public, uh, I'm, I'm here to, uh, to really, uh, get the excitement of, of what we're doing here for the, for the students and for the future of Emeryville. As, as vice chair of the COC, I'm just gonna give a little brief comments that at our meeting last month, we had a chance to say hello and welcome to, to John Quinn and, uh, and Dave, and to, and one of the results of that meeting was that community engagement was gonna be priority number one until the opening of the school, the ECCL. And in that vein, I happened yesterday to stop up on the UC Berkeley campus and stopped in at the Center for City and Schools at the University of California, Berkeley's Institute of Urban and Regional Development. Perhaps this has been a source for the community for a number of years, um, and they said, absolutely, we are the think tank that Emeryville has used and will be using now in the future to provide manpower, ideas, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I asked the director of the, uh, summer programs if he could come in and just attend the meeting, uh, today. He said this afternoon he could not, but he did leave me with a flyer, his business card, and a student academy at the Institute for High School Students that is available. So there is all the hard volunteer work that you've done, that's, it's here, and I'll pass this on to John or Dave, uh, and perhaps in the future, we can have the program manager to come in and, and, and give his thoughts to your groups. So that's it.
That'd be great, thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, moving on then, our next item is an ECCL update from Mr. Gallagher.
Okay, well, last month, I was able to show you videos of all kinds of very visible, exciting action, and I don't have that for you this month, but it's not because there's not a lot going on, it's just the, the things that are going on are important and they're behind the scenes, and I'd like to highlight a few of those things. Uh, you have a, a milestone chart, I believe, in your packet, and I just want to highlight a few items, uh, from that. And, um, and, uh, the key one being the soils. The soils, um, I think we, the soils, um, remediation, uh, analysis is going well, uh, we are doing testing, uh, we're starting to do the final stages of what we need to do with our consultants and with the DTSC to define exactly how much soil would need to be removed from the site. Uh, at this point, it looks like it's well below the 5,000 yards that we have to remove anyway, just to change the grades of the site for the new, uh, construction. So, uh, that's encouraging, and so we're trying to, to make that part of the project, uh, and phase that in and do, uh, do the 5,000 yards removal all at once, and the first portion of that would be the, um, the hazardous soils that need to, uh, special disposal. But we can't do that work until we've completed the report, and then we can't implement the report until we've done a 30-day, uh, public hearing. And so that's, that will occur over the next two to three months. And, um, if all goes well, we'll be moving dirt, uh, the first of April. Uh, the other, uh, key, uh, behind-the-scenes thing that's very important is, uh, our builder, Turner Construction, is starting their intensive, uh, bidding process for all of their, uh, sub-trades. They have about 23 subcontractors that will work under their, under them in all the different trade areas, and they're trying to get five or more bids in each area and get the most competition, and they're starting that process early. Uh, so within the next month, they'll be receiving bids in all of those categories and, um, and then we'll be able to negotiate a final price with Turner based on hard numbers that they've received from the market as opposed to estimates. So that's a, an important process, um, that's going on, and, and again, will be over the next two to three months. And, uh, the rest of the items I won't go through, uh, I, I'll just leave the rest of the time for any specific questions you might have about any aspects of the project, but just in sort of concluding my statement here, uh, we're, all of these behind-the-scenes activities are working towards getting the process, uh, getting the project in position to go full speed ahead with construction beginning early June. Um, and then that would put us in a position to finish everything, not by start of school 2015, but by start of school 2016, with some portions of the construction that, that could be ready by that summer of 2015, and the number one priority there is the gym and the pool. And I would say by the Turner schedule right now, we, we are on track to have the gym and pool back open by summer of 2015, with the remainder of the project following in behind for, uh, for 2016. That's a, that's something I heard loud and clear from this group last month, and that's, uh, and I wanted to just know that we followed up and we have that prioritization in place.
Can you give me those dates again?
Um, summer 2015 for the gym-pool facility. That's the existing facility that exists, fully remodeled, ready for reopening. Uh, that's the priority. And then the complete school facility ready for students by the start of the 2016 school year.
2000, not calendar year, but 16, 17?
16, 17 school year.
Uh, and 15 is the gym and the high school?
No, just the gym and the pool.
Just the gym and the pool.
15.
I guess I have a question for the school board. There won't be any difficulty in extending the lease over at Santa Fe, I hope?
Those discussions have already begun.
And so, there's no holdup there? They're glad to take our money?
Yeah.
I figured they would be.
Other questions for Mr. Gallagher?
Oh, uh, we have found no sign of human remains in anything that we've done here.
No, we haven't found anything like that. Uh, there, there was some excavation that we're doing in the northeastern corner, closest to 53rd and San Pablo, and we're doing a, a trench that's, that's about 50 feet long and up to five feet deep. Uh, and, um, we have not found anything in there, uh, except for things that you normally find in Phil, that's a Phil area. We had an archaeologist on site, just in case.
Good.
Uh, and, um, I felt bad for her because she wasn't able to find anything exciting or do anything.
Don't feel bad, please.
But I guess that's good news. We had PG&E there to, because, because the, the excavation was the last unanswered question about the soils is some, some trapped methane in the soils. Not at explosive levels, but, uh, something that we need to, to identify and mitigate before we build a school there. And so we had PG&E out there, they have a new, uh, and you're probably familiar, the city's probably familiar with this, but they have a new fleet of vehicles that have a, um, a pole on the top of it that can grab air samples as they're driving around. And, uh, it's kind of a new program, and so I contacted them and said, this is what we're doing, and, and the source may be PG&E, we don't know, but there's methane there, can you come and use out your equipment? And they were happy to do that. So they spent the whole day there on, uh, Wednesday, they'll spend the whole day there on Friday, driving around and parking right by where we're doing the digging. They didn't pick up any, they picked up all kinds of things in the community at large that were not methane, uh, but they didn't pick up anything on our site related to us, but they, uh, but it was interesting to see their vehicle driving around. If they suspect anything, they can actually, it's got a vacuum on it, and they actually, take in the air into the vehicle, and it analyzes it and prints out what the vapor is. And so it's called Picaro technology or something like that, so-
Do you know how methane and the hydrogen interact with each other, or not?
Do I know how they interact?
Yeah, chemistry.
Is this a trick question?
No, no, the, that site is right next to a hydrogen fueling station.
And we had a release of the hydrogen.
And we've had, yeah, we've had two releases.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the, the methane that we've had is not out in the atmosphere, it's in the soils because we, we actually drilled, our consultants drilled holes in the ground down five feet and took samples of the soil gas in the buried soil, and they found some readings higher than they should be. And so we, the, the only way we could get to the bottom of where that was coming from is to open up the asphalt, because that used to be a parking lot on that corner, open up the asphalt, and we did find, um, a old abandoned, uh, pipe of some sort that seemed to be the source. But that, we, we're still gonna do some more digging before we conclude that we've removed the source, but we think we have. But, um, the full report of this and everything else that needs to be done to the site will be published probably within the next few weeks, and then that'll go for a 30-day hearing and at the end of that, or 30-day public review period. At the end of that 30 days, it'll be brought to the board like it was before, uh, we'll receive any comments, uh, public comments, and then, uh, respond to those comments, and at that point, following that, the DTSC will hopefully approve the remedial action plan, the RAW, which is basically the instructions we'll give the contractors to start moving dirt. And so we're trying to get to that point by April 1st.
Sooner the better.
All right. Any public comment? Oh, we have a student comment first, please.
Um, I just wanted to say that, thank you for that information. We actually had a lot of our students question about the soils under our school site today in class. They were wondering what kind of things were actually found in the soil and toxins, so thank you for the information that the gas was found there.
And the, um, perhaps, perhaps you can share with the students, and they can share with their classmates, the, um, results of the, the soil investigation and the report. Maybe your teachers can use it in a, a class assignment.
It would definitely be useful.
All right, um, uh, any public comment on this item?
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Our, uh, moving on, we have two action items tonight. First is a discussion of possible action on city schools committee meeting future agendas and schedule, and, uh-
I'm gonna just start the conversation. Um, so we just want to let you know that the cities and school staff are meeting, um, two to three times per week, um, and there's this partnership, it's, it's going full steam ahead, and to make the most efficient use of our elected, um, time, the city staff is proposing and recommending that the city schools, um, meets on a quarterly basis, instead of on a monthly basis.
I'll move that.
So I also want to let you know that Mayor, um, Asher is in support of that, and also, uh, Councilmember West.
Call the question.
Well, I guess I'd like some discussion first and hear from Mr. Quinn and what the-
Well, yeah, I'm very comfortable with where we are at this point as far as regular meetings. I mean, we've got a lot of communication going on right now between the city and the district. Uh, Cindy and I meet, and Dave meet weekly with Sabrina at the city manager's office and, uh, go over any major issues that are going on and keep, make sure that the topics that come up here are being addressed on a regular basis. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the fact that, uh, that this group meets quarterly and that we can keep you fully informed as that process evolves.
Sean, if I may, and if, if a problem or an emergency arises, we can always call a special meeting.
Correct.
That's a brilliant idea. Spend your time, instead of talking here, building the school.
That's right.
So if we were going to, um, change it to a quarterly, um, meeting, um, my suggestion would be to go April, July, October, and January, which aligns up with Dave's, uh, schedule quite nicely.
Very good, very good.
I guess, I guess my, my, um, question would, would be, you know, at this time where we're like, you know, getting closer and closer to, uh, ECCL, opening operation, a joint operating agreement signed, um, is this the right time to do this, or maybe we should get through the JOA, or, um, move a little, um, closer, I guess, to, I don't know if this is, you know, I want to defer to what you're thinking, but I guess I also want to know, it seems like we might be getting busier.
Well, I think that one of the things we're seeing is that, um, there's duplication of presentations to the school board and to the city schools, and also the council and the city schools, and, um, so we just felt like it was the right time to go ahead and do this on a quarterly basis. If needed, we can call a special meeting, um, if something important or urgent comes up.
And what, uh, I haven't looked at it myself, what do the bylaws say in terms of how a special meeting is called? Is that just the two co-chairs calling it, one co-chair, is there a-
Or staff can call it in, um, yeah, special meetings may be called by the officers or the majority, um, and then you just specify when, uh, you would like it and the place and the time and-
And, and if there is a time crunch on the joint operating agreement, we could indeed have a special meeting just focusing on JOA, which might be appropriate in itself.
Sure.
So, uh, I still am calling the question.
Yeah. So, uh, let me just make one suggestion along those lines, and I want to hear from some of the, my school board colleagues. It, uh, the COC, we just amended the bylaws there to change the, to the less frequent meeting, but we had it that the chair could call the special meeting, which is a less cumbersome thing than having a majority, uh, vote, or I don't, you know, would we do this by email or something? So I guess I would suggest we consider, if we're gonna go this route, to consider amending the bylaws to make it easier to call a special meeting.
Well, they can be called by the presiding officers or by a majority of the Emeryville City Schools, uh, members, so.
Uh, so there's an or in there?
Yes.
Okay, and the officers, meaning-
Chair and co-chairs.
The two co-chairs, presumably?
I mean, you've got two co-chairs, that's right, so.
Yeah. Um, I think member Duane was first, and then, uh, member Simon.
I mean, I'm just used to being here every month. I mean, I've been like this ever since I got on the board, but, um, you know, I'm willing to give it a try, um, with the stipulations that if something comes up, we can call a special meeting, especially around the JOA. up, we can call a special meeting, especially around the JOA. I was just, in doing it quarterly, meeting quarterly, it was just concerning how lengthy the agendas and the meetings will be, if they will be any longer. But I guess we'll work on that as we, you know, as we go down the road. But, you know, I can support it. It's something new, it's something different. Let's try it. And if it doesn't, you know, doesn't work, we'll come back and we talk about it again.
I'm in support of the concept. I think there's a couple of details that would help it to ensure that we don't lose the communication that this was set up for. Right now, there's no city and school that meets more often than we do. So I think it's a good idea, but to make sure that we can get a quorum, I'm concerned that getting 10 people schedules coordinated when you're calling a special meeting can be difficult. You might want to sort of have a, still have a regular monthly time saved and tentative so that people can mark it in their calendar, but that the meetings only happen if the chairs decide. Otherwise, you may call an emergency meeting and not be able to have a quorum. And that would be my one concern because that could really hold up the JOA, it could hold up construction and all of that. So if there's some way to have, you know, tentative dates marked?
Well, you could always keep them as the first Thursday of the month, and that would be the special meeting that would be called, so.
Right. The other possibility is to make sure that the agendas for those quarterly meetings aren't overly lengthy. A lot, as you say, a lot of these agenda items are presented at the school or the city. If there was some way that the two, the superintendent and the city manager could sort of give a heads-up to each other of upcoming items that would otherwise be going to these meetings, and then we can invite each other to each other's meetings and say, you know, like for instance, the Safe Routes to School presentation, if that's already gone to city council, if that's going to be going to city council, obviously, anything with the word "school" in it, let us know about it so we can be invited. It means we might come to more city council meetings and it means city council might come to a few more school meetings for an hour or two. Don't have to stay for the whole meeting, just the agenda.
Just before, I just wanted to add real quick, I think that is a fabulous idea. I think we will get the opportunity to have a different type of discussion during our city schools committee meetings. And I think that's an appropriate time as well. So I look forward to a quarterly meeting of some kind. And the other piece, piggybacking on what Josh just mentioned, if there's a way, I mean, it's important to me, communication has been a concern of the district. It has absolutely been a concern. I won't, you know, it is what it is. But I think it's really important to make sure, you know, just to echo what Miguel said as well, making sure that we all know what each other's doing is really important. And so I just thought about, I don't know if a brief or if there's some communication that can be shared among, you know, things that would normally, I don't even know what things are, but things related to this project, if there can be some summary provided routinely to both parties, I think will be helpful. Because I think the, you know, we don't want to get to a place where we're finding out at that meeting something that happened three months ago. And I think that's, you know, just between, you know, both sides. If there's some way we can have some type of routine communication about the project or, you know, anything related, I think would be helpful.
So one suggestion I have is, on the city's side, there's a twice-a-month newsletter that goes out to anybody who, in the community, who wants to subscribe. And I know there was a website, which I don't really visit, for the ECL project. But if someone could blog onto it and then pass the link out to all of us, then we can click on that as a way, and then anybody who wants to go onto that website could also read it. But then by proactively sending the link to the committee members, then we could click on that and read that at our leisure. So I propose doing that as a way of keeping the communication going.
Well, John, if I may. On the city's side, we have a written monthly report from every department. And my expectation would be that as part of, you know, your report, Cindy, that you would reflect any actions that have been taken or anything that should be considered. And that could probably be copied by the school. And we'd have this ongoing narrative flow to the elected officials, which is critically important.
Yep. Sure. That changes your report a little bit.
That'd be great.
Rather than each kind of program of the city.
Yeah, we can put a cap on it.
Good, good.
Five second.
So we have a motion and a second. You want to restate the motion or do you have what the motion is?
So yes, we're going to be changing 2.2 of the rules of procedure of the Emeryville City School Committee for the regular meetings to be held quarterly. They will be held January, April, July, and October. And more often if needed.
With...
With a special meeting called.
With a, all members of the council and school board cognizant of the first Thursday of the month for the slot for special meetings if and when needed.
That'll work, yeah.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
One thought. We have student members that do a fabulous job in providing us with the current, it would be great if there's a way to make sure that that communication, I'm not giving you guys more work, but if that communication could definitely be shared or blasted, I think would be, you know, because you guys do timely, it's relevant, and I think it's important to make sure your voice is not lost in the flow there. So if you, I mean, maybe if there's a way to include or the school can make sure we provide the update from the students to, you know, both, so.
You know, to piggyback on that, if also going forward for our monthly meetings, if we could somehow put some item from the students on the agenda for a discussion, whatever it may be, whatever they can come up with, that they can put on the agenda where it can be a discussion that can be led by them, and it could be more of a discussion between students and the elected officials, whether that be, you know, out of the four quarters, one quarter or every quarter meeting. But, you know, I would really like to see more conversation between students and the elected officials at this meeting.
What do the students think about that?
They're like, sure. I'm graduating. Sure.
We think it would be a great idea. We would ourselves like to interact more with the members.
So that gives you a quarter to think about what the hot topics are that you want to bring to us. Does that work? Now, if we're reducing our meetings, that, you know, reduces your ability to come and interact with us. So we want to see a higher level of commitment for that quarterly timeframe. Does that work? Excellent. All right. Any public comment? I should have asked earlier on that item. Seeing none? Okay. Our cameraman recorder is against the motion, but let it be recorded.
James, give him a second.
All right, we're on to our second action item, which is appointment of co-chairs. I guess it's a yearly appointment. And Ruth, our time is up.
Yes.
John, I would like to urge the members of the city school committee to prevail on our present co-chairs and to continue on.
Oh, that's a good one.
I can second that.
It's only quarterly.
It's only quarterly. It's only quarterly.
I'd like to nominate Norde Davisson to go to win.
Oh, see, I was going to go with that, too. I can work with either.
We tried.
I'm thinking that nomination.
Actually, if Member Ash would have been here, I would have nominated her, George.
Well, she's not, and I've already asked, and she's not here.
Well, on the other hand, if they aren't here, this is the time to nominate.
That is so funny, all that.
Whatever is the pleasure of the creature.
Well, there's been a motion in the second.
There has been a second.
For Davisson to win, the D's.
Sure. Aye.
The D team.
We had the A's.
Now we're going to the D team, all right. Move to adjourn. Oh, you have to vote first.
Yes. So all in favor of the motion to...
Aye.
Aye, aye. Move to adjourn.
So we're adjourned.